Good evening. Welcome to the August 6th meeting of the Everett Planning Commission. Ayana, would you please take the role?
Chair Chatters?
Here.
Commissioner Atkins?
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Here.
Commissioner Shelby?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Atkins, if you don't mind, I'm going to just exercise a little bit of chair's privilege and read the land acknowledgement today. We acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shtehobes, I'm sorry, the Shtehobes people and their successors, the Tulelit tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society. Thank you for letting me do that. Okay. And now on to the minutes from July 16th. Commissioners, have you all had an opportunity to review the minutes from the July 16th meeting? Did anyone have any amendments or corrections that they wish to offer?
I would like to motion to approve the minutes.
You may do that, but we don't actually have to do that because the meeting minutes were available ahead of time, so they were reviewed. And since no corrections have been offered, I will just ask, are there any objections to approving the minutes as they are written?
No.
Okay, so without objection, they are approved.
Great.
Easy peasy. Okay, and we will move on to reports and comments. Commissioners, do you have any reports to offer or comments to offer today?
My only comment is I hope that anybody who's watching who hasn't voted exercises their right to vote. If you haven't, until 8:00 PM tonight, vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Shelby. Absolutely. Okay, then we'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Chair Chatters. Members of the Planning Commission, I'm Yorick Stevens, watch to planning director. Good to be with you this evening. For staff comments, I'll just mention a briefing that we provided to the city council on Wednesday of last week, July 31st. The briefing is up on YouTube for anybody who wants to check in on it. It was an update on the comprehensive plan across all of the work that we've been doing since we last briefed, I think it was the Built Environment Committee, a little bit earlier this year. We talked about the four tracks. I don't know that I've really thought about it this way until recently, but thinking of an organizing framework, as there's so many different pieces in play with the comprehensive plan, but at least lately, thinking about it in four tracks, we've got the land use and the zoning maps, the ones that we have the alternatives for, and then those, the comprehensive plan map then has the zoning height, street designations, and all of those kind of implications there. We have the goals, policies, and actions in the plan document, and that's what we're kind of diving deep into right now with the Planning Commission. We have development regulations, which we haven't talked about too much, other than in the context of the fourth track, which is middle housing, which is comprised of pieces of the first three tracks, but is such a significant thing affecting so much of the city and kind of so new that it seems like it deserves its own track. So we gave a little bit of an update on the work that's been done recently in each of those tracks. We talked about in the land use and the zoning maps, the alternatives, the environmental review, and an update to the processing timeline on that. We talked a little bit about staff's thinking around a preferred alternative. I honestly can't remember how much we've talked about that in detail and how much of it is kind of shared with the Planning Commission, but we put a map on the screen based on alternative three as kind of the baseline for a couple of reasons, seeming like that would be a good jumping off point for preferred alternative. And all of this is our things that we're going to discuss with the Planning Commission. But we had that alternative three as a starting point, and then a series of kind of changes that would be appropriate to that at higher heights in the core of downtown. Staff is working on a centers approach and an evolution from how we've treated centers in the previous comprehensive plan that may have some implications for the land use map. For instance, if we were to designate a center, and we'll have a whole item on that associated with the urban forum work that's coming to the Planning Commission soon, but if we were to designate a center on the map, maybe that would be an appropriate place where the mid-rise zoning from the urban corridor frames would come into play, whereas otherwise, in alternative three, it's low-rise, which generally seems more appropriate for that geography as in our discussions among staff and with the community and with you as well. There was Valley View removed from middle housing based on some visits to that neighborhood and what we were hearing about kind of slope stability and environmental constraints around there. Reservoir number five to mid-rise, and Glenwood extending the connector just a little bit up to Kenwood, the Madison to Glenwood connector, which has some pretty specific reasons associated around the last piece of the old gravel mine that was there that was used as a machine shop that we've had some issues with non-conforming uses and what is the real future of that. In any ways, it seemed appropriate to bring that into low-rise. So maybe a little bit out of sequence there that we need to catch up with the Planning Commission on some of those details, but it's work that staff has been doing in parallel while we're working with you in detail on the housing and climate goals and policies, which will continue today. So talked about, yeah, the four tracks, preferred alternative. We went through the list of elements and the scopes and topics for each of them. That's something that we brought to you at your last meeting, so we caught the council up with that latest thinking, as well as the schedule with the Planning Commission and the concept of having kind of rolling reviews where, as we spend two meetings per roughly element, that that's a good time to seek public comments on that element. We've done our two meetings with climate change. We're on our second meeting with housing. We'll talk about some of the public comments that we've received on that and emphasize that just because we'll move on from housing to urban forum and other elements doesn't mean we're not still accepting comments on housing. We very much want to hear what the community and advocacy organizations and others have to say about housing. But these two weeks, two meetings that we're talking with the Planning Commission are an effective time because then we can take the comments that we've received and discuss them with the Planning Commission. So there's the schedule, takes us through the end of the year with this focus on the goals, policies, actions, and plan document around each of the elements. Then we talked a little bit about how we're doing that and used climate change and housing as examples, using the goal alignment sheet and what some of the inputs are for the development of our first draft proposed goals, policies, and actions. We showed the goals for each of them on the screen. We didn't talk about any of this in any great detail. I think it was a under 20-minute presentation covering a lot of ground. And then we talked about next steps, which included the continued work with the Planning Commission, that we're seeking input from everybody on element rolling reviews, council included, and then a schedule for city council briefings, which could include, we've got the Built Environment Committee middle of every month, the next one is August 14th, and then perhaps balancing that with a full council briefings towards the end of each month for the rest of the year. So that's still tentative, but that's one way to keep the council apprised of all of the work that comes out of the Planning Commission. We would also work with our boards and commissions on their subject matter expertise, such as the Transportation Advisory Commission on Transportation. And then we would be planning our next big outreach push in fall/winter. We just wrapped up a big one in May-June, and always again, accepting comments, but that we see a lot of value in really concentrating that outreach because somebody may hear about it from one neighborhood meeting and be able to attend the next neighborhood meeting. So rather than trickling them out, we're trying to really concentrate them into big pushes. So that's about what we talked with the council about. Not a whole lot of discussion after that. There were some questions about how we do rezones and how we can, the council can engage on the preferred alternative maps and make requests there, and a couple other topics. So overall, I think it was a good update, and we can consider the council pretty well up to speed with the work that we're doing, and we'll continue to give them briefings on that schedule that I mentioned. That's the one update for today.
Any questions, Commissioners? Okay, I think we're ready to move on to, well, actually, we have an opportunity for a public comment. Do we have anyone online?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. And you have not received any in-person forms?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we are ready to move on to Agenda Item 4, which is birthing centers.
Okay, good evening. Got me again for this. So the rest, request to the city council, staff prepared an ordinance that would exempt birthing centers from a restriction on clinics in Metro Everett on streets designated transit-oriented development or pedestrian on the ground floor. I briefed the Planning Commission on this item on June 18th, but as I said at our last meeting, I did not get the public hearing notice into the Herald on time, just my mistake. And so we had to skip a meeting, and that brings us back to today. Properly noticed for a public hearing today, State Environmental Policy Act, environmental checklist, and determination of nonsignificance are in, so all the procedural steps are ready. Other than that, I don't think there's going to be a lot of changes from what we discussed in June. So I'll just give a quick recap. We can turn to our public hearing and see what questions you might have. Clinics are defined in Chapter 1904 as a building or portion of a building designed and used for the medical, dental, or surgical diagnosis or treatment of patients under the care of doctors. That includes birthing centers, and all clinics are restricted from the ground floor on those streets designated TOD or pedestrian. Here's a rough map. The black outline is mine, and I can already see one place where it's not exactly right, but the streets in Metro Everett that are TOD or pedestrian are the red and the purple ones. The one spot where it shouldn't be quite so big is where it turns green on Everett Avenue. I think that should be at the center line and not just a little bit north of that. But this is the area that we're talking about where birthing centers and other clinics are restricted from the ground floor. That is a restriction that could be modified through an administrative process if criteria are met, but as a baseline, they are prohibited. The proposed legislation would create a definition for birthing centers, which is based on definition from state law. You can see it there on the screen, and it would pretty simply add birthing centers to a small list of exemptions from the limitation on clinics, which is otherwise includes dentists, psychiatrists, chiropractors, physical therapists, optometrists, and ophthalmologists. The review criteria for amendments to the municipal code like this include consistency with the comprehensive plan, substantial relationship to public health, safety, and welfare, and promoting the best long-term interests of the Everett community. Staff's opinion is that those three criteria have been met for this proposal, and you see some language to that effect in the proposed resolution, which is in your packets. As I said, we completed a environmental checklist and issued a determination of nonsignificance. There is a comment period that goes until August 19th on that determination, if anybody is interested in commenting on the determination or the information in the checklist. Otherwise, those are available for public review on the Planning Department's webpage under code amendments. And this was a moment for a public hearing, and then I got another slide for the resolution, but happy to take questions now or after the public hearing.
Commissioners, questions on this? We think we had quite a good discussion on it when it came up before. And Yorick, were you teasing me when you said that was a small list of exceptions?
I actually have a document, the taxonomy of healthcare. I think it comes from Medicare building codes, and it is about 25 pages of different specialties. So I guess in that context, that small number of letters, it's relatively.
Okay, so it was relative. Okay, I accept that. Okay. Okay, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
I motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, Ayana, when you're ready.
I have no online comments.
Would you take the role to open the public hearing if you don't mind?
Oh, right, of course.
Thank you. Sorry.
Chair Chatters?
Here, or I'm sorry. See, now, you got me all Twitter-pated.
One of those days.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ayana, do we have anybody online who would like to comment?
I still do not have any comments.
Okay. Did you receive any in-person comment forms?
I still have not.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing on this issue?
So moved.
I second.
Thank you. Ayana?
Chair Chatters?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, in your packets, we have a proposed Planning Commission Resolution 24-03. It's fairly straightforward and brief. I guess with the public hearing, just to confirm, we didn't have any written comments either, in case anyone was wondering. Otherwise, if there's any other questions or discussion, we would appreciate a motion on the resolution, and we'll send that to the city council.
Commissioners, did you have an opportunity to review the resolution? I think it is pretty close to what we discussed prior. Do I hear a motion?
I motion to move Resolution Number 24-03.
Second.
Ayana, when you're ready.
Chair Chatters?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, I think we are ready to move on to, well, it says two Item Fours, but I think this is Item 4B. We'll call it Everett 2044. I assume this is the housing element.
That's it.
All right.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Continued, continued opportunity to discuss the housing goals and policies and actions. I think you only had a couple of days before the last meeting to review and consider those proposed goals, policies, and actions. So we, with most of these consequential elements, wanted to give you an opportunity, a second opportunity after the discussion last week. Frank has got a couple of, some slides to go through, touching on your, some points that were raised at last month's discussion, and a couple other things about housing. So I'll turn it over to Frank.
Great. Good evening. Frank Hong, Special Projects Manager for Housing. And it's good to see you here tonight, Commissioner Chatters. Last month, I presented a discussion, first discussion in terms of our housing goals and policies, our draft housing goals and policies. And as a recap, this information was presented to the commission last year in August in 2023. And then last month, we came for the first review of the draft housing element. Tonight, we intend to have another discussion on the housing element goals and policies. And just for your reference, in terms of what the goal, policy, and action is, discussion idea in terms of how we are structured each of these items. And before we begin, last month, we asked the Commissioners whether you all had any specific goals or policies you would like to discuss, and we did not hear any last month. And so we presented a couple of policies that internal staff discussed at length, and we can go over that if there are no other policy that you folks want to bring forth here tonight.
Yeah, 1.4 was definitely one that I had on my list. I know there was some discussion on it last time, so I was curious how that was going to evolve.
So, and just for your benefit as a recap, some of the concerns we heard last time, the policy HO 1.4 is, as we have drafted right now, is to require our housing to include open and recreational space onsite except when accessible to parks. And a lot of the concerns that we heard were with the all requirement, that that should be maybe more flexible, something to the extent of consider or contribute to. You know, we also, there was discussion about sidewalk use, tree, street use as open space, and, you know, what is the intention of this policy, where a lot of that framework was around individual responsibility versus a communal responsibility. So those are some of the overriding issues at last month's discussion. And we looked further into, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sullivan requested that we do an analysis of what other cities are doing, and this is what they hand out, I just provided you, the draft HO 1.4 policy response. We looked at about 10 other cities, eight of them are in here. The first two pages are roughly notable policies that we found that were relevant to this policy as drafted in the context of housing and open space. And then the additional pages are other open space-related contexts, just to give you a full scope of some of that information. I know it is a lot of information, especially just handed to you right now, hence why we created that summary. But in short, sort of what we found is that Seattle and Bellevue are like the only other two cities that sort of have this all encompassing open space requirements. The other cities require to a certain extent, whether it's for concentrated in downtown, multifamily buildings, et cetera. So there is precedent in terms of what other cities are doing. Yeah, is there any questions, thoughts? And in terms of our discussions, after looking at these policies, Yorick suggested as a potential revision attempt, what is shown on the slide there, that we replace what we have as the draft policy with require housing development to provide onsite open space, which may include indoor common areas in lieu of onsite open space development may contribute to a neighborhood parks, if you've...
And that's not much different than the policy that we started with, but just looking at a couple of different ways, and it clears a couple of the things that were uncertain. I think there were a couple of good examples. It's great to have other cities, if nothing more than seeing how different ways the policies are written in there. Yeah.
I'm curious about the indoor common areas. I'm trying to recall, was there a discussion? I don't recall seeing a discussion about indoor common areas. I know that oftentimes you might have rooftop space. That is, that would be kind of an open space that's available for communal use, but indoor common areas, Commissioners, do you recall discussing that piece? And why would we, why would we include indoor common areas as part of this particular piece?
I think it's potentially a good thing. I've seen some really interesting building designs. I'm thinking in particular, the Primera campus down in Mountain Lake Terrace has this really amazing, like, indoor area that does have plenty of green in it, but is, it's just a nice, lightleaf space that I think it does feel like open space. And just with how much we have to deal with rain in this area, I think it is good to not rule out that like an indoor common space may be able to still serve the same purpose as a outdoor space that's open to the elements.
So you're saying like, just provide the flexibility to say, hey, this doesn't have to be outside. This can be inside, but use your creativity. Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Yorick, but again, this policy originally came out of sort of amenities that developers need to provide. And I thought we talked last time about like indoor bike, or you know, bike racks and these kind of things, or some of it was sort of that indoor common space. Is that what you were intending there?
Maybe. I know, and I can't remember if it was in our staff meetings.
I watched it. I don't recall you having that discussion.
No, I don't remember. I know we just... I know we spent a lot of time talking specifically about outside, connecting the sidewalks. I don't remember us really focusing on thinking about this as an amenity, so as much as like a requirement.
Yeah. So part of it is, the word recreation space, that could have been, might not have been the Planning Commission, that might have been one of the staff conversations that that wasn't clear. What we were originally trying to do with this is a little bit reflect what our current policy is. I'm going to summarize here what we currently require in our UR3, UR4, NB, B, MU, and LI1 zones, which are all of the zones except for single-family zones, and this applies to any development type just in those zones. We require 75 square feet per unit for studio and one bed, or 100 square feet per unit for two-bed plus of common and open space. If it is 50-plus units, a quarter of it must be common, and at least 50% of it must be outdoors. Said another way, up to 50% of it can be indoors. And that's things like your gyms, or a community room with a pool table and TV, or maybe it's a swimming pool, or outdoors. I think a lot of this is you're going to have constrained sites that are going to be challenged and dedicating land area, but if it's one floor of a multi-story building, that's a little bit easier to fit. And then there's some other restrictions. Private open space must be at least six feet in any direction, and at least 36 square feet total. And there is a payment in lieu allowed for up to 50% of the required open space, or all of it, if it's within a half mile of an existing or planned park or trail. So that's kind of what we're, at least as a starting point, this is what we require now, and it's almost a description of that. I don't know if we got it exactly right or not. And I think the reason I added the, and this is just one more example of how it can be written, there's plenty others.
And I think it also sort of hits on the, I remember we did discuss, there was some, not disagreement, but there was some folks who thought that again, maybe space outside might not be needed based on the folks who live there, and so maybe this is again, another option, having some type of space indoors.
I guess my concern is, green space is actually very important for health and wellness. I mean, that's science. Look it up, right? So I understand the idea of allowing a portion of that to be an indoor common area. Commissioner Atkins makes a very compelling argument as to why that would make a lot of sense, but I guess I would be concerned if that could be the entirety of the open space allowed. To not include any green space in the open space. It feels a little potentially problematic for the health and wellness of residents. Commissioners, what are your thoughts on this?
Does that sentiment hold if, you know, say it gets built across the street from a park or across the street from a school that has an open space, you would still want to have, you know, what, 36 square feet of space per unit of green space across the street as well? So you're crossing, you're building the apartments across the street, you've got a ton of green space, acre or so, and you still want to have 36 square feet a unit?
Well, but the exception is when it's accessible to parks. So in that case, the park, the accessible park would provide that green space. So I guess I'm trying to ensure that there isn't a situation where a park is not accessible, and the only open space is an indoor common area that doesn't provide for access to green space by the community members who live there.
And you could orchestrate a buffer around it, like X number of feet, or similar. If we're not within a park for X number of feet, your option to payment in lieu is withdrawn.
What, are we doing, do these buildings have setback rules, or are these too not?
It depends on the zone. So some of them, all the zones I listed, I think are pretty light on setbacks, and maybe the UR3 has setbacks, but UR4 doesn't. There's going to be a diversity of building types and locations. Some of them are going to be, could have different rules within Metro Everett, because that's kind of a special case, but some of them are going to be on Evergreen Way, on 19th, on Broadway, maybe far from parks, maybe close. Some of them could be townhouses that are in a different part of town. And our, what would be helpful is kind of, we don't need to get the wording perfectly at this meeting, but the general sense on private and common onsite open space. There's a way of thinking that says it's a responsibility of the city to provide parks, green space, trails, street trees, plazas, and all of those things. And if someone wants to build an apartment building, just build an apartment building, and we'll take care of the rest. Those aren't always accessible to those parks, or maybe there's going to be a time gap before you have parks. And so there's, we definitely want to have onsite open space and recreation as much as possible. The question is a little bit, do you require it if a developer does not want to build it? We do have a park impact fee. It's at about $1,000 per bedroom right now across all development types citywide. So there is a contribution. We want to reflect that. So you're both required to build private onsite space and contribute in terms of an impact fee to public. The fee in lieu is on top of the impact fee. an impact fee to public, the fee in lieu is on top of the impact fee. And if that, if that's about right, how we're doing it now, one change that has to happen is middle housing, the single family zones right now, the common private open space onsite would be just the yards associated with setbacks and things like that. With the middle housing, that was one of our discussion points, that's still TBD is how we regulate open space in those zones.
I recall you all discussed how valuable it, it is for the community to kind of pool their resources to create open spaces that are accessible by, by the community. And so maybe, maybe there may be a transition period, it sounds like you're describing a potential transition period where the community may say, well, we're not going to build those spaces into our development, but we are paying these fees in anticipation of a park that will pool all of our resources and be created for green space access for the community. Is that kind of what you're thinking as to why the flexibility should be there to build without that green space already in place?
There's always a tension between housing affordability and, I guess, quality of the development, or amount of amenities and things like that. So I mean, that's the biggest, no, no one would probably argue against open space, it's just that that comes at a cost that's reflected in rents, and you could be a little bit more affordable. And then people can choose also, if open space is important to you, you would choose an apartment with open space. But then again, that's an important part of, I, I can see both sides of it myself, which is why I toss the tough questions your way.
Well, I wish Commissioner Lark were here for this, because he would remind us that, that the city has a collective responsibility and should be stepping up and offering and saying, hey, we will take on these pieces of making sure we have accessible parks. And so, because the city has not expressly done that, I guess that's where my discomfort lies. Commissioners, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, this is tough, because I think the same thing. If you're relying on parks to be built, but they're not being built, then that's a problem. But if we're pushing developers too much, and they're not building, then that's a problem. I think, I'm just trying to come back to like, I'm thinking of buildings, like apartment buildings that I'd been to, and what they look like, the old ones and the new ones. Like, what did I use when I lived in an apartment with a gym? Well, I didn't use the gym, but I did use, you know, the pool or what I, like, I'm trying to just think of living there, and what it was like, and what they looked like. Yeah, I'm struggling with this one.
Part of my thoughts with this is, like, I, in many situations, I would prefer an indoor area to an outdoor area, just because some of these apartment buildings, like the outdoor open space, it's just so crappy. It's like, oh, you have a rooftop and a path on the roof, and a few potted plants, and that's, that's your open space. Whereas I, I feel like, giving the option of having those indoor areas could of course lead to some innovation, but also, like, personally, I would just find more use in them. Again, it's, it's so rainy throughout the year that I, I feel like these outdoor spaces aren't gonna be fully utilized compared to like an indoor space.
The only thing I keep coming back to is, if you own a dog, I mean, you, you have to take your dog out, and what that looks like.
Also, if you own children.
You have to take them out sometimes.
They have to go out.
But not all the time. You can take them to the indoor space, kind of. Yeah.
Vitamin D?
Yeah, that's true, and all the other things. Yeah, I mean, I think, like, if I'm thinking about maybe not in super, super downtown, where most apartment buildings are coming right up to the sidewalk, give or take a little, so there is very little, any green space, maybe there's some planners, right, or like the new cloud building or whatever, I kinda, okay, I'm visioning that. So I don't have a lot of expectation for a building like that to create a lot of outdoor space. They'll probably do a roof deck, roof deck, they're probably gonna do some kind of a common area on the first floor, if that makes sense. Then you kinda go out a little bit further, where you're looking at apartments that are gonna be more of like that middle housing, where they're four stories or six stories, but set back a little bit more, and then I'm like, well, I do want you to have green space, because that is what's gonna fit the neighborhood, and that's what's gonna fit the expectation of somebody trying to live there. So I don't know how we build into guidance that says, do both of these things at the same time.
Maybe something around the amount of units a particular, like apartment building might have, because I, I mean, if you have below like fifty units, I, I don't see an indoor common space being that useful. I mean, by that point, we'd be talking about like a small little room.
Right.
With a few potted plants. But I mean, especially when you get into the hundreds of units, I, I think an indoor common space can become a, a real, like, common area, that would be equivalent of an, of some kind of outdoor open space.
Is it a possibility to have different guidance for, on this issue, for developments that are in like our downtown core versus when you get out into the outlying neighborhoods? Because I, I think there's a lot of validity to the idea that if someone cares about green space, they're going to look for housing in an area that offers that. So, and we just had a conversation about letting the market decide what the market wants to see. And, and Charles makes a lot of good points about, maybe not everybody cares about that. And so where would those folks be more likely to live versus less likely to live? And a downtown space, I could definitely see, you know, young professionals wanting to live somewhere where I don't care if you have green space around this apartment, put a coffee shop and a bar, and I'm good. But you wouldn't necessarily want that if you were trying to find a, a place for you and your kids. So is it possible to have different guidance for different zones?
It certainly has, is, yeah. And I think if we collect those kinds of feelings, we can work with the sentence structure and policies, and maybe it's a couple different ones, or something like that.
And I'll just also add, in terms of what I've heard today, essentially what I'm challenged with every day as part of my job is to attract development here at the city. And, you know, when I look at it from which lens, is it the person that needs shelter, or is it affordable lens, or is it more what I've heard, also neighborhood character, there's a lot of different views here, and, you know, to what you just mentioned as well, Chair Chatters, where, you know, in terms of just the housing affordability, and I talk with different folks, it's like, you want all these things which are nice and quality of life situations, but where does that input, the cost, the money come from to get these products? And to that extent, you know, sometimes I've heard, you know, are we trying to decrease the quality of life of people? I'm like, no, not necessarily, because to both, what Commissioner Adkins mentioned as well, where, you know, I remember looking at a couple of products in Japan that, you know, I've talked with Yorick about, which is essentially a building with cubby holes that, you know, can be beds, and, you know, I've heard in, in situations, that's, you know, horrible, as you know, you say, it's just like living in a coffin, et cetera. Then I was blown away when I found out that these products actually were being done in San Fran illegally, because the government has not caught up in terms of doing the regulations, but the demand was there, and for people who are able to, instead of paying three thousand dollars, pay five hundred dollars, you know, especially if you're on lower economic scales, those added funds can be put to other, much more necessary, you know, daily needs or savings, et cetera, and that can be such a huge tremendous difference there. So, you know, to your point, you know, I think there are people that will not need all the rest, they just prefer shelter, et cetera. So really, it just depends on which lens you are looking at with here to address this policy.
Is the, the payment that would be made in lieu of, is that directed at parks? Is that, is it specifically bound to them, so they're not gonna get slushed into the general fund for something else?
Right. Yeah, the cost is set at the average capital cost of a neighborhood park from the capital facilities element, and then it must be used for neighborhood parks. I think it's within the vicinity, so I think it's limited geographically, and it has to be expended within five years, which is, so there may be an issue with, with that and finding the right project with enough funds within five years. So sometimes you may wind up having to give it back or something, but, but at least yes, it is dedicated for park purposes.
Is the five-year retention a state thing, or is that a city policy?
There, you, there is a limitation on how long you can hold it, whether it has to be five years, or it could be ten years, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I, I really like Bellevue, I like their policy that includes pedestrian connectivity, and maybe that's kind of a concept that can tie these, these issues together, because if you're living in a downtown space, maybe you don't have green space onsite, but there is pedestrian connectivity that isn't even replicated in the neighborhood spaces necessarily. So, so that's kind of an amenity, almost in lieu of access to a park, from some perspectives. So I wonder if there's a way to include pedestrian connectivity as a, as an element that can maybe meet the needs in some parts of the city in lieu of having that onsite open space or green space.
Yeah, I, I definitely agree with that. I mean, if someone's within like ten, fifteen minutes of a, of a park, a ten, fifteen minute walk, then I think it's entirely reasonable to expect that that person living in, say, an apartment, wouldn't necessarily need green space any, any closer, because they would still be relatively close enough to a park. Now granted, going through and figuring out like what size of park do, do we need it to be in order to justify like someone going to that, because you wouldn't want someone living fifteen minutes away from a really tiny park, and having that technically be the green space, but, yeah.
One thing that I'm noticing, that's, and I know you said you can work on the, the language, language, is we have require, which still is, you know, it's very required. I don't see require as often on some of these other ones, they feel just more like encouraging, which obviously leaves room for interpretation, which is what we're trying to be careful of, so maybe we encourage, or something, I don't know.
And my question would always be, how do we encourage? So is it when our, our, our planners meet with the applicants and, at a pre-app and say, it would be fantastic if you could add a couple trees over here? There can be financial incentives, we've struggled a little bit with how, how those are, but yeah, definitely striking the right note of flexibility.
Do you get a lot of feedback from builders right now complaining about the open space, or do we already have a lot of builders who pay the fee in lieu?
I think some, some do pay the fee and get reductions, some do complain, and some, it's part of what they would build anyways, because it attracts tenants. I think it's a pretty standard part of a lot of apartment buildings. I've got one, one example here, the Nimbus has always been a, a case study for me in a couple, in a couple different ways. So in the Nimbus, they required thirteen thousand square feet of open space, and that was allocated with about eighty-seven hundred square feet was on a rooftop sun lounge, dining lounge, and fire pit area, so rooftop deck. Then there was a small indoor on the first floor, about a thousand square feet of, looks like kind of a dining, there's some bar table areas and a kitchen thing. And then there was a series of decks on the second floor that are private. And so this open space can be limited to one unit, think of like the townhouses, you have your backyard, and that counts towards this concept, or it can be common.
Yeah, what I'm hearing from developers is not so much specifically maybe open space to begin, it's just all the other costs associated with development, especially as costs have increased so much these past few years, so everything is just adding to the burden or difficulty of developing. And especially where Everett has been challenged in comparison with Seattle and Bellevue, and so again, it's how, I'm always trying to figure out how we can become more of a competitive, be competitive with the other two, and so additional cost never is a good thing, but at the same time, we understand what this is going for here.
Yeah.
And then to throw out one other example, skate deck for a different development style, because we're probably thinking a lot about apartments, but this would apply to townhouses and other types of developments too. Skate deck is in an MU zone, so despite being a townhouse, it is subject to the multifamily rules, which means it doesn't have the, the kind of backyards. I believe none of the townhouses have yards, I'm not sure if they have rooftop amenities, but I don't think so. What they have is a basketball court, and I believe a picnic table on the back next to a wetland buffer, which is on the I-five side there. I don't know if you've been into the development, but maybe you could sneak in and take a look at it and see.
I think they all have decks too.
Okay.
I drive by them a lot, but.
Yeah, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have to sneak in there and, and take a look around, I haven't been through there in a while.
I'm assuming each unit does, but I could be wrong.
Well, and the skate deck property is, is interesting, because it has a distinct lack of pedestrian connectivity to things. So that, I, I think pedestrian connectivity is, is something that, I could really see that operating in lieu of that open space. But when you're at a site where you can't really walk from there, there's not a safe walking route, or there's not a route that's safe for folks who might have mobility issues, so I don't, I don't know if there's a way to find language to kind of parse that out, to give flexibility to the market, because I agree with you, Frank, we have to find a way to let the market find solutions. That's how we incentivize, is we take the handcuffs off the marketplace and let them come up with solutions. But we do have to concern ourselves with the health and welfare of our community members.
And that pedestrian connectivity, would you connect it to parks and trails, or just baseline, you're on the sidewalk network to, you have sidewalks?
Is there no parks or trails?
None, nothing over there. Right. Yeah, there's nothing over there.
And our parks and rec and open space plan, we'll turn back to that, that we did a major update a couple of years ago, is definitely planning to reduce those park gaps and build parks. Some of it, a lot of it actually is gonna require development to contribute via the park impact fees, and then we go for grants and things, but a lot of that will pace with development. But we're certainly not gonna be satisfied with what we've got for the future.
I think in the downtown area, it wouldn't necessarily need to be a route to a trail or a park, because I think there might be different desires by the people who would choose to live in one space versus another. But the skate deck, which is, it's, that's very much in a neighborhood that's starting to get into where families live. And it, it would be concerning for there to be no access to green space, because there really is not a safe way for, you know, a, a parent with their kids in a stroller to get to a park, to walk anywhere where they could take their kids. So I guess that's why I'm thinking about zones, and maybe having different directives for different parts of the city, where we don't end up with families in a development where they're kind of just landlocked in, and, and there's nowhere that they can walk to, and there's nothing onsite that they can access or nearby that they can access.
One thing to think about that part of Silver Lake is, that's zoned, I mean, that's an urban growth corridor, so it will have high density, and it is true, it has three la, or three parks, but they're all on Silver Lake, and if you're living close to, you know, past.
This is the north end of that.
Right.
Where it's nowhere near any of those parks.
No, it's a long walk.
Yeah.
It's a busy street, long walk, so that's a perfect example of somewhere where you do want to encourage outdoor, some kind of outdoor space.
Yeah.
I think that helps. Great.
Yeah, Commissioners, do you have additional commentary on this, or can we pause and, and invite public comment? Ed, would you like to step to the microphone, introduce yourself, let us know your city of residence, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
You'll wanna turn it on, there's a button.
Ed Whitman, I live just over on Walnut here, and this is a difficult thing to provide the green space, but some comments were made here, alluding to putting the city on the hook to provide green space, and the map he put up, some of these areas are farther than a half a mile, it's twenty-five hundred feet from a park. My, the red flag for me was, that map, everything is developed there, so that would require the city to buy land, which is very expensive now, to provide this green space, and that would hurt everybody in town, because they've gotta come up with a substantial amount of money to do that, and a thousand bucks a bedroom is not gonna cut it. So I would ask, please do not have language that would put the city on the hook to provide green space, as that would drive renters, their rent's gonna go up, homeowners, the tax is going up. That, that was my only comment.
Thanks, Ed, appreciate it. Do we have additional discussion? Do we have additional discussion on this item or are we ready to move forward?
Nope, looks like they have their word cut out for them still.
Thank you for your valuable input. Uh, the other policy that we thought had some discussion in the first review was in regards to the mandatory inclusionary zoning efforts. Again, you had asked to, because of where we are in the comp plan process, that inclusionary zoning needs to be attached with an upzone and hence, hence this is an opportune time if the commission thought we, you guys wanted to go in that direction and some of the requests that you had asked the department was to assess inclusionary zoning in a sort of this adaptive or conditional format and Yorick had looked into it a little bit more.
Yeah, I just did, did another scan of the policy landscape around inclusionary zoning. It's featured in our own housing action plan and a couple of other housing action plans, mostly in the sense of consider inclusionary zoning among other measures to provide for affordable housing. Um, I think staff's opinion continues to be, and this is based on the housing development incentives program work, uh, one or two years ago where we had consultants look in detail at financial feasibility of housing development and the gap between the rents expected and the cost to build. And some of why, um, we're not seeing the development that we'd like to see and what incentives it would take to provide that. Um, the message out of that work is that the, uh, financials and the, the market is not there to be able to support private development along with the requirement that a significant portion of the units be held as affordable. Uh, right now for 20% affordability, we offer 12 years of no property tax through our multifamily tax exemption program. A mandatory inclusionary zoning, um, as I understand it, would basically require maybe not 20%, maybe less than that, but for no financial offset. So that would just have to come out of the base rent. So staff are concerned based on that, that we would stymie development, which itself would have a negative impact on affordability. I think I've said this a couple of times, but it's an, an important enough one that I just want to continue to, to, to be clear that this is the direction that we're going because, uh, the only time you can implement mandatory inclusionary zoning is along with an upzone. We are doing changes to our capacity. We're creating that capacity now, so this may be the one opportunity. Um, we talked about a couple, you know, we, we kind of have three options. It's either provide the capacity and provide, and require inclusionary zoning, don't provide the capacity, that's not really an option, or provide it without the inclusionary zoning. We had talked through a couple ideas at the last meeting around, uh, maybe phasing or creating some conditions around it. We did some brainstorming and weren't able to really latch on to something there. But the station area maybe was one, and this is still just early conversations, but, uh, inclusionary zoning seems particularly useful and particularly appropriate around light rail station areas. Maybe the market fundamentals, when it's closer to opening day, would be closer to where the market would support that. That also would, uh, be a tool against gentrification associated with the station. Public investment leads to, uh, increased rents and costs and all of that sort of thing that you would maintain a, a proportion of the units that would be affordable. There are all the other tools that we have to maintain affordability such as MFTE on the incentive side. We have a density or a height bonus right now, but the consultant said that that's not something that the market would support people buying their way into the extra height either. So I think that's about, that's about it. I mean, it's a, it's the same conclusion that we've been reaching. Um, just really want to be crystal clear with that because of this, this time period that we're in and the opportunity that we have. And I guess there's a little bit of an opening maybe around the light rail station areas. Where are those light rail station areas? They're downtown, uh, they're Casino Road and Evergreen Way, they're, um, somewhere near Boeing and then there's the provisional station at Airport Road. So to me regarding housing, really the focus is on the Casino Road Station and the, and the downtown Everett Station. There's already a lot of capacity in Metro Everett, so maybe there's not that much that we're gonna be adding here to be able to require the affordability. Um, so then maybe the focus is more on that Casino Road and there's some, uh, maybe value on limiting development before the light rail station is closer because you might get, uh, lower scale of development than would be appropriate when the station comes. So there is a concept out there on kind of land baking and, and phasing your development to wait for the infrastructure. I don't know that that's the right plan either because do we want to wait 10, 15 years for housing development when we could really use it now? And if this would stymie private development? But affordable builders, whether they're using tax credits or other incentives or are nonprofit and planning to include affordability, they would not be impacted by this. So you would just be impacting the straight private development and maybe disincentivizing it. And those are all of my thoughts on the subject.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, the wheels are turning slowly. I'm sorry, 20% is what we're currently at or is what's being proposed? I, I.
Twenty percent is what we require for a 12-year MFTE, multifamily tax exemption. So you pay no property taxes for 12 years, which is worth.
Assuming you put.
Millions.
At 20% of your units are affordable.
For the 12 years.
And then after 12 years, you can move them to market.
Correct, or extend the period.
Sure.
Yeah. Uh, mandatory inclusionary zoning, I think how I've seen it might be a longer period and you just have to. If you want to build housing, 10%, 20%, 5%, any number must be affordable to whatever affordability level. It's attractive because it keeps pace.
Right.
The need, but will people build?
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I'm just thinking like, and I think this is, it depends on the city you're in, but is the need housing or is the need affordable housing? I know we have this conversation, I know our numbers, right? We're actually, we have quite a bit of affordable housing. But long-term, one of the reasons we don't have affordable housing is because we have a housing shortage. So if we're stifling it, but at the same time, I want everybody to be able to access housing. This is again coming back to this tug, tug of war. I think one thing though I think about is, um, like from 2000 to 2015, like that time period and the mentalities of building and I don't know how often inclusionary zoning policies were required during that time period. And so I'm just trying to compare like back then to now, what is the same, what is different? What were we doing right? What were we doing wrong? I think overall, we just weren't building enough housing. But we were trying to solve affordable housing by requiring inclusive housing, but the issue of not enough housing happened faster. It was more great, right? So there's a part of me that thinks we should dial it back, but I'm not sure I think we should completely scrap it.
So I just have a couple of questions. So, well, first a point, affordable housing doesn't only come through new construction. It also comes through the natural aging of what exists. And our intention, from my understanding, is to repair and up, update and retain our current housing stock, a lot of which would naturally become more affordable due to the aging process. So how does, so that's my first question. How does that analysis fit into this issue? The second question has to do with displacement. How does this issue interact with our priorities around proactively preventing displacement? Um, and the Casino Road area might be a specific air, area where we need to, um, have inclusionary zoning defined for that area because it's, there's gonna be such a transition with the light rail stations. Um, and the, the possibility for displacement of a strong and connected community is very great in that area. So, yeah, that's where I'll start with my questions.
Well, I'll say there's a certain amount of, you're right, decreasing, um, rents with buildings as they age, but normally, again, if you build more units, that would generally have a bigger effect of lowering, uh, the cost of affordable housing. And, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's very difficult in terms of the preservation side of things where there's just not a lot of research on, of the, aware of from the funding side. And so there's just a lot more on the new build side or new creation side.
I'll touch on the displacement. I think it is one of the tools, anti-displacement tools, because if it's economic displacement coming from overall growth in rents and values and attractiveness of a neighborhood to a, a new set of folks, that by requiring that some portion of it be held as affordable, if the reason that folks might be displaced is that they can't afford the rents anymore, that would be a way to at least have some of the rents there. So it, it would help. Would it help if it meant little, less development, we'll say, maybe no development, but less development? There have not been a lot of new housing developments. Most of the activity is around downtown lately, um, four corners, but that was an affordable project that would probably have been unaffected, would have proceeded either way. Yeah, so I mean, that's what another, yeah, I, we, we send you the hard ones.
How impactful, like, uh, you're, I'm hearing, be, because of some of our rules that we're using, we're not seeing the growth that we could be seeing in comparison to some of our neighborhood cities. Like by how much estimate?
Like, for example, compared to Linwood, there, see quite a lot of development there.
And they're getting light rail stations.
And yes, they are. Yes.
Or Malik Terrace, yeah.
Yep. I, I, we can pull some, some figures and comparisons. I don't know that either of those two cities has inclusionary zoning. The ones that do that I know of are Redmond, Seattle, Snohomish County is considering it adjacent to this, on the Highway 99 corridor and perhaps in the other light rail station areas. There is this concept, we have the policy that says participate in regional and depending on how you define regional, if, uh, all of the other jurisdictions along the light rail line all do it, then at least if you want to build a building near a light rail, you're, you're gonna have to accept that there's that cost along with it.
Do we run the risk though of only building a, affordable housing in certain areas, which is one thing we've been trying to avoid?
Well, I mean, now we're building no housing. So like we.
Think you're poison.
There's gotta be a way to move the ball up the field.
I've sort of been working on that effort similar to that, but not focusing on inclusionary house, but again, just sort of understanding that playing field of between us and our neighbors and identifying, you know, how much does development regulations add to the cost, et cetera? And, uh, there's an organization right now that's working on a study like that that should be out in the next couple of months and that can be.
We love studies.
Helpful, but, uh, yeah.
Okay. I, I, I think it was you Frank that made the point last meeting when this was discussed that, um, developers will just go right outside our boundary and build where, um, they are not subject to mandates that don't allow their projects to pencil. And I think we do need to keep that in mind. And we also need to keep in mind that what defines something as exclusionary is often the impact, which we don't learn until after the fact. So sometimes we might create policies thinking that maybe it's a neutral policy on its face or maybe it's one that's meant to be inclusive or inclusionary, but the impact of that does not turn out to be that. It may even turn out to be the opposite. So I, I guess I, I'm with Commissioner Sullivan and I think that we should be very careful about things that decrease incentives for folks to develop here. Um, and we also need to, to keep in mind that we're focused on the outcome. The outcome of more housing is, that's going to be inclusionary. Enough housing stock for folks to, uh, be able to, you know, have it is, that's inclusionary in and of itself. So.
I just also want to add to the point of what you were mentioning earlier, and I know we're sort of maybe going to too much, you know, the weeds now, but just in terms of this, that development environment here, you know, I've asked a lot of developers, you know, as you mentioned, we have already provided for the affordable AMI sections, you know, and we should be aiming for market rate and above, but I've asked a lot of market rate developers, why aren't you coming in here? Part of that's also the economy, the, you know, the rents, the ROI on the return on investment there and it just doesn't justify here. So hence, we keep shooting still for the affordable and if that's what we can get, at least more housing, more people, that slowly builds it up, but it is definitely a huge, tremendous challenge.
Commissioner Sullivan. Yeah, just that, that forty thou, almost forty thousand, uh, unit number for me just always sticks, sticks in my head when we talk about these sorts of things of, I, I just don't want to stifle development that we desperately need to solve this crisis.
I absolutely agree that it should be regional. Um, I, I, I think that we do want to lead the way in some areas, in as many areas as we, we can, but at a certain point, um, if you, if you're not in agreement with your neighbors as to how you're going to develop your policies around your land use, um, we're gonna end up in the same boat and, and we're at crisis level. We can't. I agree with Commissioner Atkins. We, we just have to keep centered on the fact that we are being asked to nearly double our housing, our housing stock in 20 years and that we have never, we have never done something like this. And, and even during our last comprehensive plan, planning period and the results of that and the targets we had, we were not even on target to meet those. So, yeah.
And I'll just also add, and I've had discussions with Yorick about this in terms of your example of Linwood, you know, and we've talked about maybe not setting policy at all, removing policy or deregulating at a larger comprehensive level by when we get to the subarea planning, maybe we can do more because to your point of Linwood and I look at Alderwood and I, I'm there every week and I see, you know, I've, you know, the planners, they've mentioned they removed FAR, they removed height limits, they removed other things and no one's actually done buildings that are tremendous, but it's really just setting that expectations for developers, having them hear that message that we are here and inviting for development. I think that is important.
Commissioners, further discussion on this? Commissioner Shelby, did you have any comments you wanted to make on this?
No.
Okay.
Then I'll just add again, for the rest of the policies we spoke on last time, I mean, we are working diligently to address them and some of them are extremely challenging. We've had discussions about that today, but we are working on those and so, um, yeah. Any last opportunities to any other policies you folks want to bring up? Otherwise we can move on.
There, so not this one. Did you have another one after this one?
Uh, no.
Okay, so I have a question about 2.6. So 2.6 jumped out at me because it says carefully evaluate the cost and supply implications of proposed regulations affecting housing development. And, uh, I, I, I felt like the word carefully was the only one of these policies that started with something kind of subjective like carefully. So do we need, do we need to define that or define the lens through which we are evaluating or, you know, what impacts we're centering in our evaluation or is there a less subjective way to, to say that?
It's interesting. You caught the one thing that I, we had another policy that also had carefully in it. We removed that carefully, but we added carefully in this one and it was on my mind to ask that same question that we never got around to. So, um, I don't think we really defined it in this one, if I.
I think it would be when we, so this is about a proposed regulation affecting housing development, so let's, uh, push forward two years. It's 2027 and we have a proposal to require, uh, should I make a fake example? Require swimming pools in everybody's.
Oh, yes, please.
On-site. And, uh, Linwood is part of that. So we just did birthing centers. That is not gonna impact housing, but let's say it did. In the package of materials, uh, you and the public and the council would be looking for a careful evaluation of the cost and supply implications. I wouldn't say we did any, uh, real cost and supply implications along with the, uh, birthing centers report. Uh, if it were the swimming pools thing and we did not touch on it, that would be inconsistent procedurally with the comprehensive plan. Now, what does carefully mean and what is, you know, perfunctory? Uh, the county has a, a capital facility impact sheet and a housing, uh, cost and supply impact sheet that goes along with all legislation that they have to fill out. Um, it's kind of like this. I think it's lost a little bit of its luster over the years and it's turned into just another piece of paperwork to fill out. Um, so that, I mean, that's how I could see it working. If it just says evaluate the cost and supply, are we. If it just says evaluate the cost and supply, are we going to get less of a careful evaluation? Potentially, it sends a message of emphasis, but probably not going to really change it. Could say exhaustively, could give us, and then that's going to make every ordinance take longer for staff, but provide some value by really, we'll talk about the master builders' letter next, but you can imagine that they were supportive of these kinds of, an eye on the impact of cost.
So I hear you saying that, that the intention is that the impacts be determined, or potential impacts be determined, and then the cost and implications of those be evaluated.
Right, so we would not be satisfied just saying we're, we're requiring swimming pools now. We'd have to say, well, swimming pool on average is going to trickle down to another $5 a month on rent for everybody in that building, whether they want it or not, and then, doesn't mean we can't do it, but it means that we have to have some sort of analysis. Now, if we said it's going to cost more, I would probably push back on adequately evaluating it. Again, if, if it says carefully versus not, you know, these are just, these are all words that reasonable people will be trying to follow.
Commissioners, are you not as persnickety as me on that? No? No? Okay. I hear, I hear what you're getting at. I just feel like carefully, like when I ask my kids to clean their room carefully, it means something very different to them than it means to me. So I guess that's what I'm trying to drill down on is, is, so it sounds like you're saying you want, your intention is that the, there should be identification of these impacts, and then that list should be evaluated for the cost and supply implications of those impacts. So is there a more concrete way to say that rather than using the term carefully, which could mean something or nothing to folks? So, and that's, that's not, that's not urgent, just my thoughts on that one.
And so essentially, again, we're just looking for another word and for emphasis.
Yeah, yeah. One, one bit of wording that I also had a question on was in 2.12, where it says implement measures to prevent, reduce, or mitigate concerns associated with low-income affordable housing. And so the reason why that one just kind of caught my attention is just because the language implies that there, that there are like inherent, there's something inherently problematic associated with low-income affordable housing.
Correct, so this policy is a derivative of an existing policy, 4.6.3, which was to promote efforts to help change the incorrect public perception that tenants of rental housing are less responsible citizens than homeowners, so it's, again, really helping address that concern.
In the heart process, Housing Affordability Regional Task Force that the county, well, Mayor Franklin and Executive Summers co-chaired three or four years ago, one of the top ranked among all the mayors of Snohomish County actions was education and changing public perception. I'm sure you've all heard about or been part of public meetings where people are hammering on a rental property as being associated with all kinds of things that it may not Anyways, that's, that plus the existing policy, plus there's a reference to H5 in the multi-county planning policies, which, it's H4. Address the need for housing affordable to low and very low-income households, recognizing that these critical needs will require significant public intervention through funding, collaboration, and jurisdictional action.
So could I, could I maybe make a suggestion for 2.12? Maybe mitigate concerns or address stigmas? Like, maybe to say specifically that you're, you know, the purpose is not to agree that there's something inherently problematic about low-income affordable housing, but to address concerns which includes stigma, stigmas that may exist. Just to make it clear that, that it's not being written from the perspective that there is something inherently problematic about this population of our community.
Gotcha. And the, what do you think about our existing policy uses the word incorrect perception? So right in the policy, it says that that's not true. Do you think that something like that would, should be retained?
I do. Commissioners, your thoughts?
I would support that remaining, yeah.
I would as well.
Okay, so I'm just going to keep going through my list if you don't mind. Raise awareness of universal design to increase housing accessibility. So I wanted to make sure that I understood the context of universal design. Is this with regard to disability access or differing abilities? Is that, is that the context of universal design?
Yes.
Okay, and so i- is there, is there a way that we could maybe not just raise awareness, but incentivize it through, like, some of the pre-approved designs that we're hopefully looking towards putting together for ADUs, but having those concepts incorporated into some of our pre-approved designs? And that, that isn't necessarily something with this verbiage, it's just kind of like, okay, raise awareness can be one thing, but incentivizing is different from raising awareness. And so can we raise awareness and incentivize by building that aspect into some of the things that we maybe allow folks to get quicker permits on? My other question was regarding 3.5 and 3.2. And I was, I was just wondering if, it almost felt like those two were so similar, so I wanted to just be clear on if there's a redundancy that can be eliminated there, or if they need to be too distinct.
Did you say 3.2?
3.2 and 3.5.
So 3.2, ensure transparency and involve communities disproportionately affected by housing challenges and planning processes, prioritizing their needs and solutions. 3.5, avoid concentrations of low-income or special-needs housing and ensure such housing is integrated into the community? Those two?
Yeah.
Those feel like, to me, 3.2 is more about engagement and participation of communities, so not planning for them, but planning with us. And the concentration is more, I mean, concentration of, I'm thinking of, we're working with a group of partners on a Casino Road Affordable Housing Work Plan, Housing Consortium, led by LISC with consultant support, and one of the items that came out of the Affordable Housing Work Plan is to designate Casino Road as an affordable housing target area, and we've talked a lot in that group and not come to consensus on, is that really the right idea? And this would be, I guess this policy 3.5 would speak against that. Policy 3.2 would be ask people on Casino Road.
Oh, you know what, actually, no, I, I read my notes wrong, I think. Three point, it was 3.1 and 3.5 that I, I'm sorry, I, I read the line wrong on my notes. It was 3.1 and 3.5 that I was thinking had some redundancy, so I apologize, I gave the wrong, the wrong numbers to you.
Gotcha, yeah. 3.1 is celebrate and foster diversity and reduce economic segregation by developing mixed-income communities.
And then 3.5 is avoid concentrations of low-income or special-needs housing and ensure that such housing is integrated into the community. So those were the two. I apologize for the others.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, that makes sense. Is there anything around mixed-income communities being?
A quick question. So you're, there's, talk about designating the Casino Road neighborhood as an affordable housing, I'm sorry, I can't remember exactly the words that you used, neighborhood, and you guys or whoever is trying to determine if that's a good idea or not. Can you give me an elevator pitch on that real quick? I'm asking because we were spending so much time talking about requiring affordable housing in new buildings, so I'm like, oh, well. But also, we're concentrating it, these kind of things are a little bit at odds with each Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yep, I can never find where this document is, but give me one second, and I'll get you.
And I'll also just go back to, well, he looks for it, but on 3.5, I think also, Kimber, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but when we have discussions about avoid concentration, that's also in relation to the city's responsibilities for the affirmative leaf, furthering fair housing, a part of our responsibility as a city, because we need to assess how we're equitably providing house, affordable housing across the city. Traditionally, it's been very concentrated, so while the first one, again, I think it's more so, we're trying to say we're not avoiding providing affordable housing, but figuring out a better way to do it. So I don't know, still, provide clarity or not, but that's, I think, some of the thought processes behind it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess when I think of affordable housing, I think you want affordable housing, you want some everywhere.
Yeah. I've got the document, I'm almost there.
Okay, I can fill this space with words if you'd like. I'm really good at that. Hey, this is also a little off-topic, but are we going to come back to, like, height minimums and setbacks and stuff like that, and, or do we completely move past that? Are we done? I'm only asking because I was looking at the recommendations, the, anyways, and it kind of reminded me, if we're going to talk about that again.
Designing development.
Is, yeah, did we finish that element? Oh, great.
You have more fun to come.
That's the one I'm really looking forward to, I think about it a lot, actually. A lot.
Okay, in the recommendations, objective number five, creation of an enabling environment, coordinated work on the comprehensive plan. And then one of them is City of Everett to designate the Casino Road Web Triangle area as an area of focus for the creation of affordable housing. Maybe the way I said it was a little bit of a different emphasis than that. So Frank and I participated in this group, but the recommendations do not necessarily reflect the policy of the city. As I said, this is something that we're wrestling with a little bit.
Yeah, it's a tough one.
It also says expand inclusionary zoning to Casino Road.
Great.
But we don't need to reopen that topic right now.
Just curious, thanks.
So we're continuing to meet, so there was a series of meetings last year, five meetings, it was a pretty quick work group, and they published the plan, and then we just started meeting again two weeks ago on implementation of it, so that's where the discussions are ongoing. It's got Everett Housing Authority, it's got ASCO, it's got affordable housing providers, Citi, any other major.
Sound Transit, a lot of just different organizations, everyone involved in housing and capital improvement in that area, so.
I think that's great.
So we'll keep you posted on that specific one, and then the Casino Road work in general.
Okay. And the last one that I really had questions on, you guys discussed last time, which had to do with displacement and how to handle basically like a first right of occupancy, but I didn't see any of those, any of that commentary reflected in any of the materials here. So I'm wondering, is that, is that something that can be incorporated? Should it? Commissioners, do you feel it should be incorporated as a, as, yeah, as a displacement, as a preventative measure or an action to be taken to prevent displacement?
Is it different than coordinate and participate in education and anti-displacement efforts? Oh, because that's specific to a neighborhood, never mind.
Yeah, because it's, it's a specific action, and, and so like for, you know, the, the first one listed there is implement a comprehensive housing finance strategy that supports and facilitates anti-displacement efforts and development of market rate and low-income affordable housing. Examples include use of housing trust fund, the multifamily tax exemption, housing levy, credit enhancements. And then there was further discussion, and maybe I'm misremembering that it wasn't specifically in regard to this, but there was discussion about retaining the right to occupy new developments for folks who are members of that community, and is that something worth adding to, like, you know, spelling it out and saying it as part of that particular action?
This one we were going to talk about with the rethink housing.
Will that be done in five years?
Yeah, you know, this happens to be another tenant opportunity to purchase and community opportunity to purchase. TOPA-COPA is one of the high priority actions on that same Casino Road Affordable Housing Work Group. It's a concept that appears in rethink housing, so I think we're going to, we were going to touch on it in the next segment here around tenant protections. I think it is something, I mean, between the couple of action plans that have mentioned it, it's something that we do need to consider. I, I don't think it's directly addressed in the policies or the actions, I do think it could be nested in that action that you mentioned, but I think we could be more clear about it. And I think that's something that we were going to bring to you.
Okay, that's it for my laundry list. Commissioners, do you, do you want to make us stay here later tonight and add your own laundry list? No, no takers?
Moving on to the next section, it's, we also reached out to a variety of housing partners to take in public comments, and we received a letter from the Master Builders Association, overall supportive, some of the pieces, particulars that they mentioned were in regards to ADU pre-approval application, streamlining our review process, fee simple ownership, minimizing off-street parking, and our middle housing approach that the city's taken, and, I mean, in general, again, very supportive. Some other organizations have also expressed interest in commenting, but will do so at a later date. And as York mentioned previously, I mean, we're repeatedly open for public comment and accepting of it, and so I just wanted to share that really quickly.
And I'll add, this is like, why is everything about the Casino Road Affordable Housing Work Group, but LISC, who is helping coordinate some of those efforts, has brought on a consultant to specifically review our housing element and the housing-related provisions of the comprehensive plan, and I think we should see some comments coming out of them relatively soon. Really appreciate the, the feedback from Master Builders, and just another shout out to everyone to send in your comments. You got a great sense of the flavor of discussion, and we'd love to hear everyone else's input too.
Comments or discussion on the commentary offered or this final subject? Because I believe this is the final, is this our final agenda item?
We have a couple more.
Oh, a couple more, oh.
Depends on if you want to.
Let's keep it going.
Since we've discussed our action plan, we also thought it'd be great to provide an update on where we are on that. This first slide sort of summarizes the various, this is the second handout I can point you to, the one with the recommendations, and these are the recommendation items that we have completed thus far, roughly five of them. I don't know how many total there are, but for the most part, in terms of the action plan, we have either completed them or in, or in, working in progress to complete them. And these additional slides, most of these say work in progress because they're all related to the comp plan update and what we're doing there, so all of these are ongoing at the moment and expect to be completed with the comp plan cycle. And, yeah, unless you want to speak to any specific, we just wanted to provide you with an update in terms of just where we are on the housing action plan.
And we'll just breeze through it today, but I think this is important for us to touch on a couple times through this process. We're, we're incorporating pretty much everything in the housing action plan into the comp plan. We want to check back, make sure we haven't missed anything. TOPA-COPA was one of those, we're just reviewing it now, we saw that. But, yeah, for the most part, I think it's all either done or in the comp plan process. Hopper.
And but that completes our agenda for tonight.
I guess the other piece on the actions is if there was something that we wanted to fold into the list of actions, and nothing was apparent from our side.
Okay. Commissioners, was there something that anyone had in mind that they wanted to add to the actions? Okay, so we have, it says urban form on my agenda. Is that, is there?
Thankfully, that is not on, not supposed to be on the agenda.
Okay, okay. Then we have a final opportunity for public comment. Ayana, do we have anyone online who would like to comment?
No comments from online.
Or in the gallery?
Haven't received another comment yet. Thank you.
Okay, well, with that, we have completed our agenda. And so I'm gonna, for this is for you, Commissioner Atkins, I'm gonna normalize the use of the gavel. We we are adjourned.